Oh, here I am. I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Now that I've got the microphone working. Chair Rhodes Die.
Present.
Vice Chair Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Stout.
Here.
Commissioner Weber. He let us know he may miss or come late.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if we can move into approving three sets of minutes. Are there any corrections to the April 2nd? Minutes? What about the April 16th? And I think this might be a typo, it says April 2nd twice, so any corrections to any minutes? Thank you. That makes perfect sense. If there are no corrections, the minutes from April 2nd and April 16th are approved. So now we're going to move to business from the audience, which I believe that we have, so I'll read these instructions. We will now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the Planning Commission, not otherwise in our agenda tonight. Later in our meeting, there will be two public hearings specifically to hear comments regarding the major variance for a marijuana retailer at 1853 Second Street and the discretionary use for a short-term rental at 921 South 7th, 67th Street. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press 9 if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called to speak, please state your name and mailing address, please keep your comments to three minutes.
There is no business from the audience at this time. The person that wants to speak is wants to speak during one of the public hearings.
Okay, great. So I think we are on to our agenda item. Major variance for proposed marijuana retailer at 1853 Second Street.
I will read the quasi judicial statement of legal rights now. The role of the Planning Commission is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about land use matters in Springfield. In making those decisions, the commission must apply the law of Springfield that existed when the application was filed and cannot vary from or change that law. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, members of the Planning Commission will state whether they have any conflicts of interest, such as family, financial, or business relationship with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. If such potential or actual conflict exists, the commissioner will state whether he or she is without actual bias and whether he or she will step down from the Planning Commission during the case. Planning commissioners will also state whether they have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. If any of the planning commissioners have had such contacts, they will disclose the substance of that contact. During the time for public testimony, a witness may challenge the impartiality of a planning commissioner and may rebut the substance of a planning commissioner's knowledge of the facts. The commissioner in question may respond to such a challenge. A copy of the procedures and agenda for tonight's hearing and copies of the staff reports have been posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org. Any person with an interest in this item may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. If you want the Planning Commission to consider testimony and to present your right to appeal the decision to the City Council and ultimately to the Land Use Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing before the Planning Commission closes the written record. You must raise an issue clearly enough so people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. If you are the applicant, you must raise concerns about any conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the Planning Commission to respond, to preserve your right to seek damages in circuit court. If you feel you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony for the Planning Commission, you can ask the commission to hold open the record or to continue the hearing. You must make that request before the chair closes the public portion of the hearing. If the Planning Commission holds open the record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the commission makes a decision. If the Planning Commission continues the hearing, then oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearings continue or the records held open for any other reason, state law provides we must hold open the record for at least seven days after it is closed to all other parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of the application unless the applicant waives that right. Please make sure that your comments are related to the applicable criteria. The criteria for major variance approval, correct, is the first one, okay. For major variance approval are in Springfield Development Code, Section 5.21.130. The criteria are described in more detail in the staff report posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org and will be summarized by staff in the presentation this evening. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments from the phone or online that are out of turn will not be part of the record. And so Chair, it is now appropriate to open the public hearing and to ask if any planning commissioner wishes to declare any potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or independent knowledge of relevant facts.
Now I will open the public hearing and ask the commissioners to disclose ex parte contacts, actual bias, or conflicts of interest. I'll start with myself. I have no ex parte contacts. I have no actual bias. But I, and no actual conflicts of interest, but I do have two potential conflicts of, or sorry, one potential conflict of interest, just as a realtor doing business in that community. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. I also have no ex parte contact, no actual bias or conflicts of interest. The potentials are, I am an insurance professional, I do business in the area, I own real property in Springfield. Those are the, those are the only potentials.
Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, I have no ex parte contacts and no potential conflicts of interest.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, no ex parte or actual bias or conflicts of interest, thank you.
Commissioner Schmunk.
No conflicts, no contact.
And Commissioner Stout.
No ex parte contact, no actual or potential bias or conflicts of interest.
Okay. Are there any challenges to the impartiality of the Planning Commission or objections to the commission's jurisdiction to hear this matter? Hearing none, we'll now hear from Senior Planner Tom Severs.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Tom Severs, Senior Planner with the Current Planning Section. The Planning Commission has requested to consider a major variance for a commercially zoned property addressed as 1853 Second Street in West Central Springfield. The applicant plans to establish a marijuana retailer at 1853 Second Street, but it is 940 feet from Hamlin Middle School, which is within the 1,000-foot straight-line distance required in SDC 4.7.177B. The major variance requests relief of 60 feet or 6% of the standard in consideration of state law, as well as geographic and physical barriers between the proposed marijuana retailer and Hamlin Middle School. As seen in the image, the subject site is outlined in red and Hamlin Middle School is outlined in yellow. The green line shows the 940-foot straight-line separation between the two sites. The blue and purple lines show actual walking distances from the school access points on Centennial Boulevard and Moffett Lane respectively. There are five criteria to consider for approval of a major variance, which were addressed in full in the staff report and summarized as follows. Criterion A, an unusual condition exists that is unique to a lot or parcel, building or structure, lot parcel size, shape or topography, the location or size of physical improvements or other similar circumstances not anticipated by this code but related to the property that would deprive the owner of rights commonly enjoyed by other property owners similarly situated in the same zoning district. There are two factors that present unusual conditions at this site as it pertains to straight-line separation of uses, those being physical and geographic barriers. Physically, Highway 126, the ramps that serve the highway, interceding businesses and Q Street impede pedestrian access between the two sites. The school itself is also entirely fenced with designated points of ingress and egress at L Street, Moffett Lane, and Centennial Boulevard. Geographically, barriers such as the Q Street ditch and the physical rise of the land that creates the Highway 126 right-of-way also impedes straight-line access between the two sites. Taking measured distances into consideration that do not rely on straight-line access, that being walking routes, measurements from the two nearest points of ingress and egress at Hamlin Middle School, being Moffett Lane and Centennial Boulevard, result in approximately 2,200 feet from Moffett Lane and 3,000 feet from Centennial Boulevard to the subject site. Both walking routes are circuitous, indirect, and are more than double the required distance of straight-line separation. Additionally, ORS 475C.101 provides that a marijuana retailer may be located within 1,000 feet of a school given that the marijuana retailer is not located within 500 feet of a building utilized by the school district for public pre-kindergarten and kindergarten programs, a public elementary or secondary school for which attendance is compulsory, or a private or parochial elementary or secondary school. And the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission determines that there is a physical or geographic barrier capable of preventing children from traversing to the premises of the marijuana retailer or the marijuana retailer was established before August 1st, 2017 in accordance with the city or county ordinance adopted under Section 29B, Chapter 83, Oregon laws 2016, which this site is not. Staff did not find that there are any buildings utilized by the school district for public pre-kindergarten and kindergarten programs, a public elementary or secondary school for which attendance is compulsory, or a private or parochial elementary or secondary school within 500 feet of the site. There are, however, physical and geographic impedances as previously discussed. Criterion B, the variance shall not be inconsistent with the development standards of this code or of any applicable refinement plan diagram, plan district, map, conceptual development plan, or other applicable plans or studies. The subject site is zoned community commercial, which is consistent with the commercial designation of the metro plan. The site is also located in the Q Street refinement plan, which did not contain any policies or guidance specific to marijuana retailers. The major variance requests relief from a distance threshold, that being the 1,000 feet from a school, based on physical and geographic barriers and does not propose changes to zoning or the metro plan. Therefore, this criterion is unaffected by the major variance request. Next, we have Criterion C. The variance shall have no significant adverse effects on other properties in the same zoning district and/or vicinity, or the request can be conditioned so that there are no significant adverse effects. The proposed variance does not have a significant negative effect on adjacent properties because there are no off-site changes to existing access, emergency response, and traffic circulation. This criterion allows for some adverse effects, just not significant adverse effects. Impacts from the proposed use will also be adjusted through a minimum development standards application for the change of use if this variance is approved. Staff did not receive comments indicating concern about significant adverse effects during the writing of the report associated with a change of use to a marijuana retailer at the proposed site. Next is Criterion D. The unusual condition described in subsection A above shall not arise from a previous code violation or rely on loss of profit or financial need. The request for a major variance did not arise from a code violation. The proposed marijuana retailer constitutes a new use and tenant in a pre-established commercial zone where the use is permitted. The circumstances around the request to locate the marijuana retailer on this property was not based on a loss of profit or financial need for either the city or the property owner. Granting the proposed variance will not change the cost associated with locating a marijuana retailer at the subject property. Lastly, Criterion E. The variance requested is the minimum necessary to alleviate unusual conditions. The applicant filed the major variance request to seek minimum necessary relief from existing conditions around the site. In concurrence with state law, the applicant has requested consideration of physical and geographic barriers as unusual circumstances that impede pedestrian access between the two sites. Staff did not find the presence of more suitable commercial properties for lease in the immediate area that would have reduced or eliminated the need for this variance request. And there is no evidence that the applicant had other options for locating the proposed marijuana retailer further away from Hamlin Middle School. Because all applicable criteria of approval have been met, city staff recommends that this application for a major variance be considered for approval. Thank you very much, and I'm here for any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Leave Rainy Bird is online, and there she is.
Hi there, can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, my name's Rainy Bird. I am the applicant that filed the request for major variance at 1853 Second Street. I apologize that I can't be there in person tonight. I'm thankful for technology and the Zoom for allowing me to be here virtually. I would like to thank the commission for taking time to review my request for a major variance to the zoning law pertaining to a marijuana retail outlet. I would also like to thank Tom Severs and the entire planning department for doing a thorough review of my application and for the recommendation to approve the variance proposal. Based upon the planning, the planning commission's findings, I strongly feel that my proposal meets the major variance criterion A through E as listed in the SDC 5.21.130 of the Springfield Development Code. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to the opportunity to contribute to the local community in a manner consistent with both state and local regulations. And I'm here and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Rainy. Now, do we have, now for public testimony. First, do we have any testimony in favor?
None.
Neither in favor nor opposed?
We have one person, Nathan Keepers, who would like to testify against.
Okay.
Mr. Keepers.
So please state your name and mailing address. And when, when you're ready, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Nathan Keepers. My business mailing address is 1881 Second Street. My personal address is P.O. Box 703 Pleasant Hill, Oregon. So my name is Nathan Keepers. My wife and I own the property and business two doors north of the proposed site. My personal opinions aside on dispensaries, I believe the thousand-foot rule. Now I probably could have had a few other arguments to put now that I saw some of this. The thousand-foot rule is to minimize exposure of kids to dispensaries. I think that's the intended first purpose. And part of the argument is that there's physical barriers such as the freeway and such that were mentioned to keep kids at less exposure even inside the thousand-foot distance. This isn't true. And I'm a witness to the kids that walk past Second Street, the proposed site, daily on school days. And the reason is, in fact, I think that these physical barriers actually concentrate children feeding past the site to the residential areas that are north of the proposed site. So in a sense, the dispensary is between the school and the residential area that serves many of these children. So the barriers that are there that you guys are, the city is claiming are preventing children from accessing the site. In fact, direct the children on a walking path directly past the proposed site. And sorry, I'm getting off my notes here, but minute and a half, so. A large proportion of the students, I'm sure, live in the residential areas to the north of the proposed site and the kids only have a few routes to get to that area of the residences from Hamlin Middle School. They're going to go up Fifth Street, and they're either going to turn to the east on Q Street, or they'll continue north on Fifth Street, or they'll turn west on Q Street, and then they're going to make a right on Second Street. So any of the kids that live north of the freeway, about a third of them in that, or a third of the directions they could go, will direct them right past the dispensary. So anyhow. Additionally, I don't know if you considered that there's a daycare within 300 feet directly north on Second. There's two preschools 900 feet away on Fifth Street. Willamette Leadership Academy drops school students at Fred Meyer within 900 feet. And this produces a lot of kids in the area that are all congregated relative to the school. Schools concentrate kids' activities and this is part of that. So anyhow, voters had a reason to keep kids and dispensaries apart, and I think we should keep this in mind.
Thank you. So do we have a planner response to any of that testimony?
I can provide some response. I believe that the state law allowing the dispensaries within 1,000 feet do look at the 500-foot radius. That is the limiting factor for having dispensaries within that area. As Mr. Keepers has stated, some of those are within 900 feet, which is outside of that 500-foot range. And daycares are not listed as uses that cannot be within 500 feet. So other than that, this application meets the criteria as stated. And I would turn over to Rainy if she has anything else to add.
Thank you for your concern, Mr. Keepers. And for this major variance, like Mr. Severs had just mentioned, the Oregon law does permit marijuana retail outlets within a 500 above a 500-feet radius of, from a school. And this major variance more than meets the 500-feet criterion for that as well as the other criterion for major variance for the city of Springfield. So that's all I'd like to add.
Thank you. So we have an opportunity for questions from commissioners, from anybody that we have heard from. So I'm just going to go down the line. Commissioner Salazar.
Yeah, thank you. I do have one question, and just one, and this can be for staff or for the applicant. And I'm just wondering if any outreach specifically happened to either Springfield School District or the leadership of Hamlin Middle School, whether that was part of the minimum requirements for outreach for the major variance or if it was just outreach that happened outside of any minimum requirements for outreach.
No further outreach was made outside of the minimum requirements.
Agreed.
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. Just kind of directed to the applicant. You know, one of the things that might be helpful to, to speak to if you, if you mind. Well, we can kind of look at, at measurements and numbers. I think the larger principle of the issue is, is how we come together as a community. And I'd like to believe, and I do believe that most responsible dispensary owners, yourself would be included, you consider going through this process, share all the same values. Nobody wants to see the issues that are facing our kids get any worse. And I'm not just, and I'm not suggesting that dispensaries play a part in that. But what I, what I think that might be helpful is to kind of speak to the principle of the issue. Because I think there are some ways that dispensaries can actually contribute to the safety of that. I think that there's an age requirement for going into dispensaries, if I'm not mistaken. And there's education that can go with that, plus community partnerships. We can't keep our kids from wandering past dispensaries or liquor stores or retail stores that sell cigarettes. But what we can do is work together as a community to kind of talk about, these are real issues, and how do we work together for the same goal? Because as Mr. Keepers pointed out, there are going to be kids walking past this if it were approved. But that doesn't mean that it's going to contribute to the challenges facing the school. And I think that, that comes down to kind of a shared value. So I wanted to kind of put that out there for you to be able to speak to that concern. Because I think when we're looking at these state requirements, it really comes down to trying to keep kids safe. And I don't believe that anything you're trying to do is trying to put kids in jeopardy. But I think it's nice to be able to speak to that. So if you wouldn't mind kind of responding to that, if you have any thoughts to that.
Absolutely, thank you for that. And well, first off, the Oregon marijuana industry is a very highly regulated industry. There are rules and regulations that are in place for the safety of the community. And with that being said, the dispensary, you know, anywhere on, in public land, you know, kids are going to be able to walk in front of. But with the dispensary, there is no advertising allowed to be targeted towards children or anything that might be attractive towards minors. As well as within dispensary, no product is visible from the outside of the store. And so that really keeps the eyes off of any of the potential things that, you know, children. I have a child myself, I, you know, certainly wouldn't want children using or being exposed to marijuana in an inappropriate manner. Also, for the community, the dispensary, you know, is going to provide a lot of jobs for community members who are local within the city of Springfield and Lang County. And as well as, you know, creating job opportunities, you know, in a kind of economic turbulent time that we're in. The dispensary also originally was started as a medical marijuana program. And with that being said, medical marijuana is, serves a, you know, very valuable tool for patients and recreational consumers to alleviate a lot of different elements with, that they are needing to find relief from. With that they are needing to find um relief from their different stressors in the body. And marijuana offers an alternative for them, um, you know, for pain management and whatnot. So. I am a part of, you know, Lang County. I've lived in Springfield and I do not want to. Um inhibit the community growth in any way, and I think that the. Marijuana retail outlet that I'm proposing at putting in. Will be responsibly managed as well as, like I said, there are very strict and stringent. Regulations in place by the state that I will need to comply with. And, you know, if 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 I wasn't to meet any of those needs, you know, I there's ramifications for that. So. I do believe that the dispensary will provide a lot of opportunities for the community. There is not a dispensary right there in that neighborhood, and there are a lot of community members that could be served. And helped within. The, you know, one mile radius of the location. And that's all for now, unless you have any further questions.
Let's see who else has more questions. Uh, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair. Um, out of curiosity, I guess it's a question for uh. Planning staff, are there historical land use cases that could be comparable to the situation? Um, outcomes that were measured that you're aware of? Does it compare this to?
None that I am aware of. Sorry, no.
Thank you.
Um, these regulations were adopted. Uh, in my. My time with the city, and I also do not recall any um major variances for this locational standard.
Uh, Commissioner Schmunk?
Uh, so uh, verify, but for the fifty feet, there's nothing um. That the commission could con- should consider in terms of uh denying it.
The the five hundred, five hundred feet?
Okay, five hundred, five hundred.
Oh, the the sixty feet, uh, that that we're asking really from, correct, right?
I mean, it's within sixty feet. Am I clear on this?
Uh, it is nine hundred and forty feet from Hamlin, so it is off by sixty feet, roughly the length of the front edge of the site.
Crow flies, okay. Um, so and then I just out of curiosity. Other uh distributors in the area, around the area, do you have any?
No, um, not related to marijuana that I'm aware of. No, I think further down Q Street, there's vape stores and stuff like that, but no dispensaries.
Reasonably close.
Yeah, yeah, reasonably close.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So so I'm just a clarification again on this distance and length. Um, a question for Tom and staff is. In the applicant's initial letter uh to the planning commission, uh, they said that the variance could be granted i- if is um. Not within five hundred feet, but within a thousand feet, if the Oregon Liquor Commission Control Commission determines there's a physical geographic barrier. Is that required? Is it the Oregon Liquor Commission that has to actually say that there's a physical barrier? Or is there somebody else that has to say there's a physical barrier?
I would look over to Christina i- if she can answer that. Uh, I am not exactly sure on the operations. Thank you.
Gonna be confusing and say yes, both. Um, so the, there's two sort of steps in the process to become a licensed marijuana retailer. One is that they need a land use compatibility statement from the city stating that the use complies with all of our land use laws. Our code has standards for marijuana retailers that are very similar and parallel the state standards, but aren't verbatim identical. One of the standards that's very similar to what is in state regulations is the thousand foot separation from schools. The cities is actually a little bit broader than the states in that ours applies to public and private schools. Um, so would apply to schools that are not compulsory attendance. The state regulation applies to schools, either, both of these standards apply to Hamlin. Hamlin is a a public secondary school under our code and a compulsory attendance secondary school under state regulations. So the planning commission will have to decide that the variance is appropriate and OLCC will have to agree that the physical barriers exist. Um, OLCC, it's possible, could disagree with the planning commission. Um, either way, but in order for the license to be granted, we have to find it's compatible with our land use laws and. Um, OLCC would have to agree, uh, find that standards met.
Got it. And just one follow up, Chair. Um, and then I'm I'm just curious about this distance. Obviously, it's measured as the crow flies. But then obviously how we walk is a completely different matter, correct? So I just want to be clear that that's what we're looking at as two different things. One is as the crow flies, which is within that thousand foot. And then there's the walking paths, which somebody may take or may not take, which are somewhat independent of that measurement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, I would be very worried if children are walking across the highway.
Uh, I'm I'm speaking for the regulation, you know, like as we're looking at what are the requirements and what are the regulation on this particular parcel, right? That's what I'm interested. Okay, thank you.
I can read the language in the code um about how the measurement works. That's helpful. Um, within a thousand feet means a straight line measurement in a radius extending a thousand feet or less in every direction from any point on the boundary line of real property. Comprising an existing public or private elementary, secondary, or career school. So it's the, it's exactly the line that um Tom's shown.
Sure.
Just one additional question, Christina, about the code, um, and the language of the code. It sounds like um the daycares that Mr. Keepers mentioned that are within the five hundred foot. Uh, boundary, they're not, private daycares are not considered within that code under that definition. It sounds like that was not um.
Preschool.
Or preschools are not um considered under that definition of the code as interpreted by staff.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, it's public or private elementary, secondary, or career schools attended primarily by minors. And so the um. Recommended interpretation of that code language is that elementary means um K through five typically. Um, and that preschools and daycares would not fall under that classification.
Thank you.
So uh, now that we've finished with questions from uh the commission, would the applicant like to add anything? Are you the applicant?
Hi, sorry, I'm here. Um, I just wanted to add that. You know, based upon the laws of the Oregon um ordinance and then, you know, major variance. I do feel that I provided, you know, all of the evidence in support of the approval of the major variance. And I just thank you again for your time and your consideration for me to be. You know, able to contribute to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina, do you wanna maybe remind the audience of their rights to speak?
It's the commission's decision whether to take additional testimony, but I would um state that according to the application, the the property owner's interests may be aligned with the applicant, but isn't listed as the applicant. On this application. So in terms of final rebuttal, I don't think that permission extends to the property owner. But the planning commission can decide to continue taking public testimony outside of the um. To basically deviate from your standard rules, which would um. Usually lead you to um decide whether you want to close the hearing or not. If you do allow um additional testimony, then you should um also open it up to anyone who may be interested in providing additional testimony. Uh, I would recommend, and then also again, provide final opportunity for rebuttal from or or clarification from the applicant.
Commissioner Salazar?
Oh, I was just gonna mention that um what Christina mentioned at the end, that the the most important thing is to provide the applicant the final um. Opportunity for rebuttal. So we do have the opportunity um to hear additional testimony as long as the applicant has the.
Sure, I'm okay with that. Do you have something you'd like to add, sir? Go ahead.
Please state your name and your address.
Patrick Ewing, uh. Four seven four Brookdale Avenue, Springfield, Oregon, nine seven four seven seven. Um, so I've been the property owner. I ran a business out of that same location for the last twenty-three years. Um, very well aware of what happens in that area. Keep in mind that the uh Safeway Pioneer Plaza is actually further than a thousand feet from my store, from the s- from the Hamlin Middle School. So technically, anybody that wanted to run a marijuana store could open one up right there, which is actually closer than my location to the school. The other thing is I talked with uh Rainey quite a bit about, uh, because I was a little uh hesitant initially because. You know, there's, I've seen some of the stores. I don't like, you know, the looks of some of them. They look kind of. Um, just not very professional. Uh, she can uh conveyed a lot of knowledge as to uh what's required by the state. Uh, as far as having a a dispensary in a retail location. Uh, they have to have a lot of security cameras, not just any old security cameras that have to be, you know, there's certain regulations, the doors have to be. Um, and windows have to be secured as well, not just any old door or a window. Uh, so there's protections in there. Again, like she mentioned, none of the product can be out. That can be touched or stolen. It all has to be locked up away. So after hearing all that, I felt I felt pretty uh good about um. Uh, how how secure it would be. And the other thing on the variance. Uh, the state, which is relevant in the sense of, but in the sense of Oregon State has um, uh, one of their major variances is included, it is. Uh, ops, uh, some obstruction between the school and the thousand feet. So they already have that written into their particular law. I don't know if you knew that or not, but that's already part of it. You don't have, you don't have to get a major variance through uh the Oregon law. Anyway, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you. And uh. Applicant, do you have anything else to add? And then we'll be finished.
I haven't seen more to add. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh. Would the commission like to close the public hearing and or the public record? Or continue the hearing and hold the record open to another date?
Yes, I can make the motion. Um, I move to close the public hearing and public, public, public record, excuse me.
So we have a a motion to close the public hearing and then public record. Uh, do we have any discussion on the motion? Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Now, do we have any discussion? Uh, can we get a roll call, please, Sandy?
Sure. Uh, Commissioner Stout? Closing the record and the hearing. Uh, Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Salazar?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Buck?
Aye.
And Chair Rhodes-Dye?
Aye.
Um, and I'll just go ahead and discuss, but um we're going to want to incorporate. Your reasoning into findings that we can bring back to you for adoption, however you're gonna go. So we would like to hear how you're viewing the evidence. Um, and then we'll, based on your reasoning, we'll incorporate that into the staff report um to create, to have findings that address the testimony that you've heard tonight.
Thank you. Uh, so the motion uh to close the hearing uh carries unanimously. So uh. If we're ready to discuss the application. I will entertain a motion from the commission.
I'm, I move to uh approve the major variance as proposed and presented here this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, let's discuss.
I'm just gonna get down the liner.
Uh.
We'll go this way.
Cool. Um, I I I appreciate a lot of the great work. Um, as I'm reading this, and this is not. As I'm reading this, it's simply a matter of the thousand foot requirements and also the um. Looking at the thousand foot requirement and on from as the crow flies. And I don't see that the geographic barrier is substantial enough to completely deter all pedestrian traffic that direction. So it would still fall within this range as I'm reading it, that I will be voting no on the measure um for this reason. So that's all.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Uh, so um. I I appreciate the testimony and opposition. Um, I also um. Feel like, and and I agree with Commissioner Buck, it's a concern for the community. Um. But I don't, I don't think, I mean, the the concept of children getting a hold of marijuana is a um a huge concern. But but I don't think this applicant um is doing anything different than what the law allows and that they've obviously. Been careful about the presentation and done it according to the um rules and so um. The the fif- the sixty feet is, I I I think there's. Yeah, I'm not concerned with that. Oh, thank you.
Sure, I just wanted to say I appreciate the thorough uh presentation by city staff, um, and the applicants and the uh comments um against definitely uh. All all great stuff. Um. I think the sixty feet is negligible, in my opinion, and based on the uh substance pro- provided by the uh applicant and staff, I I don't have an issue with it. So I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Um. You know, I I I think when I, when I hear what um was testified by Mr. Keepers, I I certainly agree that. Um, there's gonna be flow of traffic through that area. There's, there's gonna be kids that are gonna be going to the the other retail stores that are in that area. Um, I think, I think that's a given, and I think that that's a concern. However. I think that. Um. As was pointed out, there's vape stores the other way and um. You know, and and there's, there's less regulation on those. And I think what ultimately leads me to support this and made the motion in support of this. Is the fact that I'm I'm confident that the applicant understands the concern. I mean, it's. Um, substance use in our communities is a huge concern. I think. Anybody that isn't acknowledging that um maybe isn't paying attention. Uh, so. Uh, I appreciated your comments that you are paying attention, you are aware of that, and I think it's a community effort. So. We, in in my view, I'm going to support this because I don't believe that saying no to this applicant is is necessarily going to prevent. A location, you know, a hundred feet away, so to speak. But I do think we have an applicant here that understands that. Um, we have a lot of challenges as a community. And while med- medical marijuana, recreational marijuana is part of our community, it has been, it's going to be. Uh, there is responsible ways to to handle that. Um, and so. Uh, I'm appreciative of that from you, Rainey. So uh, that's, that's my thinking is is less about. The measurements and more about how we look at the issues. And I think. I'd like to believe that we're all on the same page as is what the benefits are versus what the challenges are.
Thank you. Um, yes, I think um always appreciate a chance to hear from the public, um, both um. Anytime that we get engagement from the public, that shows folks um are engaged in their community and they want to see their community thriving. Um. In my opinion, it seems that uh staff has made a a clear case that the conditions of approval um have been met. The um. That's really what we have to base our decision on is the conditions of approval. I think uh Mr. Keepers has brought up a great point that um. Maybe the conditions of approval don't consider um traffic flows in a specific context, but unfortunately, that isn't um. Up to our our discretion. We have to make a decision based on what is allowable in the law. And it seems clear to me that um the majority of um, yeah, but besides taking a uh an illegal route. Um, within to get to. To get from the middle school uh to the proposed site, um. It would, the the majority of traffic is taking considerably longer than. it would, the, the majority of traffic is taking considerably longer than the, um, a foot traffic is considerably longer than the, uh, thousand feet considered in the conditions of approval. So I'll be voting, um, in favor.
I was planning to say essentially what, uh, Commissioner Salazar said. So I, I agree with what you said, and I'll be voting in favor.
So I think, um, I mean, the straw poll voting and knowing what, how the commission intends to vote is really helpful to drafting those findings. So you can go ahead and, I think, um, if it's okay with the commission, um, we'll re, put this item on the next, as Sandy mentioned, put this item on the next, um, agenda so that we can revise the staff report to reflect, uh, since the comments were related to criteria of approval, um, we'll provide, um, findings in response to those criteria, um, per the discussion that the majority of you have had this evening and then bring that back for a vote at the next meeting.
I'm fine with that. Do you wanna add something?
Uh, if in the staff report, um, any, any, I, I mean, I know that you guys, uh, do reach out to the school districts and, um, and those kind of things. I mean, uh, I, I know that you said that there, there wasn't anything beyond the minimum requirement. Um, but it, it certainly would be helpful to know if they had a comment, one way or the other. Cause as I, my understanding is they probably did. Um, and if you could include that in the, in the report, that would be excellent.
You, you would need to reopen the written record and then provide a specific open record comment time and opportunity for response. Well, she is under state law, that would mean it couldn't come back at the next meeting and have to come back at the one following that. You could also continue the hearing until the next meeting and then close it and the record and make your decision on that night.
I, I think if it were, I, I think if it were that, um, if it were really relevant, I, I can, I trust the staff would have included it already.
So, um, I was a little confused with what you said, Christina. Um, what, what was it that you wanted us to do now?
Um, so at this point, we can be done with this item because we'll bring back the actual findings for you to review before you give your approval. So we'll write those based on the rationale that you expressed in your straw poll voting on the first and second motion. So, um, since we do have a motion on the table though, Christina, how do we handle that?
Um, I think you can just postpone the item until your next, um, meeting and then the, the motion will come up, um, and just be reinstated for your discussion at that time.
Okay. So I am postponing this item until the next meeting and, um, moving us on to our next agenda item, which is a discretionary use for short-term rental at nine twenty-one South Seventy, Sixty-seventh Street. Christina, you are gonna go through the quasi judicial hearing again?
I am gonna go through parts of it. Was there anyone, um, in attendance? Is there anyone in attendance who did not hear the statement I read earlier this evening? Um, I'll repeat high points, but I won't repeat most of it. Um, cause I'm not seeing anyone in the audience. Is there anyone on, um, line? Okay. So, um, so I'm gonna, the same, uh, rules around impartiality bias, um, conflicts of interest apply. So the planning commission will need to make those declarations. A copy of the procedure and agenda for the hearing and copies of staff report are posted for this item are also posted on Springfield Oregon Speaks. Any person with the interest in this item can offer oral or written testimony or both. If you want the planning commission to consider your testimony and to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the city council and ultimately Land use Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing before the planning commission closes the record. You must raise an issue clearly enough so people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue on appeal to the Land use Board of Appeals. If you are the applicant, you must raise concerns of about any conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the planning commission to respond, to preserve your right to seek damages in circuit court. And if you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony from the planning commission, you can ask the commission to hold open the record or continue the hearing. You must make that request before the chair closes the public portion of the hearing. Please make sure testimony is related to the applicable criteria. The criteria for a discretionary use approval are in Springfield Development Code five point nine point one twenty. The criteria are described in more detail in the staff report, posted on Springfield Oregon Speaks dot org, and will be summarized by staff this evening. And so Chair, it's now appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if any planning commissioner wishes to declare potential or actual conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts or independent knowledge of relevant facts.
Great. I will open this public hearing and I will ask commissioners, starting with myself, to disclose ex parte contacts, actual bias or conflicts of interest. So I haven't had any ex parte contacts, don't have any actual bias. I don't have any, uh, actual conflicts of interest and my potential conflicts of interest are as a Realtor working in the community and also, um, a property owner that participates in the short-term rental market in town. Commissioner Buck?
Uh, I have no ex parte contact, no actual bias. Uh, only the pen- potential bias that I, I mentioned earlier is I own real property in Springfield. And, um, I'm a licensed insurance agent in the area.
Thank you, Chair. Um, no ex parte contacts, no potential conflicts of interest and no actual bias.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, no ex parte contacts, actual bias or conflicts of interest. Thank you.
Commissioner Schmunk?
No bias, no contact.
And, uh, Commissioner Stout?
No ex parte contact, no bias and no potential or actual conflicts of interest.
Wonderful. Uh, are there any challenges to the impartiality of the planning commission? Or objections to the commissioner's jurisdiction to hear this matter? Hearing none. We will go to our staff report from senior planner Andy Lindberg.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just gonna bring up a couple PowerPoint slides here. Uh, just bear with me here and I've renamed myself hopefully up here. Okay. So this is a discretionary use permit for a short-term rental at nine twenty-one South Sixty-seventh Street. It's on a side cul-de-sac off of South Sixty-seventh Street. If I can get this to advance here, I hope. There it is. Um, so the property is outlined in yellow. Um, it's proximate to the Mountain Gate neighborhood, which is just to the west. Uh, this particular property has a four-bedroom home with a double attached garage. And the applicant is proposing to use it as a short-term rental and not as a primary residence. The difference being that there would not be anyone residing on the property, uh, full-time. Um, or even the majority of the time, it would be entirely used as accommodations. There is provision in the city's development code for short-term rentals either as owner occupied, um, which is a type one or non-owner occupied, and this is a type two requiring discretionary use permit. Staff is aware that there are other types of rentals, short-term rentals in the community. Uh, this is the first discretionary use permit under new code provisions that came into effect in twenty twenty-two. The applicant has provided information, um, that they still reside in the community, but they're intending to have the, uh, property available for rent, um, on local accommodations such as Airbnb. Um, you will note that today, staff received two comments in opposition to this, and that's, uh, was on Springfield Oregon Speaks. Um, hopefully commissioners did have an opportunity to review that. Um, the most applicable concerns that were related, um, were to do with parking. And in the staff report, staff is recommending two conditions of approval. The property is listed as a four-bedroom home under the, uh, tax assessment guide. And so staff is recommending that it be limited to no more than four rooms for rent, uh, equating to the number of bedrooms. As well, there is, um, four on-stike parking spaces, uh, double attached garage plus a driveway. And therefore, no more than four vehicles associated with any rental is another, uh, condition that staff is recommending. Because the site is on a cul-de-sac, uh, there is limited on-street parking, although it is available. Um, it does not preclude the use of on-street parking, but to minimize the impact to neighborhood and to address some of the community concerns that were outlined in the responses from adjacent neighbors, uh, staff is recommending that, to the extent practicable, all parking is contained on the site. Um, the applicant is here this evening. If you have any other questions, um, but I pay happy to answer any questions, um, if you have them.
Thank you. Uh, applicant, do you have a presentation? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Andy. I believe the correct way to refer to everyone would be a nice, uh, thank you for your time, planning commission. It's my first time doing this, so I appreciate the experience. And I'm wanting to start off by saying thank you to, uh, the planning commission team that was very kind to take my phone calls. Um, when I was first attempting to figure out how do I move forward with the short-term rental. Um, the thank you comes on behalf of, uh, my wife and I, and I realize I forgot to introduce myself, so I'll go back for a second, but um, I am, my name is Adrian Sherrod. I am the owner at nine two-one South Sixty-seventh Street in Springfield. Um, alongside my wife, Nicole Sherrod, and I am representing us both here. Um, we actually uh, purchased a second home, um, and we will be, hopefully with your approval, um, moving to that home on two nine 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 Brett Loop, uh, in Eugene, uh, Oregon, in the Santa Clara area. It's a nice neighborhood if you haven't been there. Um, thank you. Coming back to everyone, uh, including Andy, who is very informative, um, for me to make sure I followed the rules um, and do it the right way. I was doing a lot of research online and it seems like a lot of, um, a lot of people that do short-term rentals don't follow the guidelines set by the city. So, um, I'd like to share that we did. Uh, we have not rented the home at all. If anything, we were optimistic and preparing for moving forward. Um, we did communicate to all of our neighbors and made sure that everybody that was in the cul-de-sac knew that we were making that transition. Um, we paid the fee. Uh, it's a hefty fee. It certainly scares a lot of people away from moving forward here. So the first thing I wanna say is, you know, we did things by the book and we didn't try to, um, break any of the rules. Um, it's my first investment alongside my wife to find some sort of financial break in this world that we live in today, which is crazy expensive to be my age and figure out a way to move forward. We hope it's a good return on investment. Um, we aren't going to manage it ourselves. Uh, I will share a couple of things and visibility that I plan on taking ownership, but we hired a professional company. Uh, we will be hiring a professional company called Five Star Management. They manage dozens of, uh, Airbnbs or short-term rentals in the area, um, just to make sure that we're doing everything by protocol and uh, they're experts at delegating issues, uh, with the people that might be coming in and out of the rental property. So it's not like my wife and I, who don't really have a clue on how to go about some of these things, are gonna be doing it by ourselves. Uh, we've been doing it with some professionals in mind. Something that I wanted to share as well for visibility is that, uh, our nanny, our sitter, is actually one of my neighbors, um, right across. Uh, my wife and I have a, a two-year-old boy. Um, we don't have family in town. Uh, we're not from the area. I don't know if you know how difficult it is to raise a child in general, uh, but without any family to help you around, um, you know, every day we go over there to make sure that he's with nanny and, um, one of my neighbor's, uh, daughters, who they get along very well. Um, so every day I'll be there in the morning and every day my wife will be there in the afternoon to check on a home, um, to make sure that somebody's keeping an eye on things if somebody has a concern. Um, not only that, but, uh, I have to go and cut the grass bi-weekly, uh, which means I'm gonna have to be going in there and making sure everything's tidied up in the back. Um, and then every week there's trash. So somebody's gotta take care of that and making sure it's going in and out. So in terms of visibility, uh, my wife and I are still going to be there almost daily, making sure it's good. So again, thank you for your time, um, and consideration and, uh, yes, how can I say?
Thank you. Do we have any public testimony? No, okay.
Not at this time.
So since we don't have any public testimony, we don't need a staff response or a rebuttal. Uh, so, uh, commissioners, I'm just gonna go down the line and ask if anybody has questions for the applicant. Uh, Commissioner Salazar? Buck?
I have no questions at this time, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I wanna thank you, uh, um, strap again, I forgot your name, I apologize. Adrian, thank you, uh, for, um, taking the time to learn the process, going through the channels and, and, um, coming and talking with us, uh, about this, you know, um, it's not easy and it, it puts a lot out there. Um, but I appreciate all of that and I appreciate that you're leaving with concern for, uh, you know, what your neighbors have to say. Obviously, there is, there's some concerns with parking, um, that we received just today. I understand that's been a- addressed, but are those things that you've had the opportunity to speak with your neighbors about and, um, hopefully come to some sort of resolution?
Uh, I, I believe, thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Buck. Um, uh, I believe the, the recommendation by the planning commission would be for us to make sure that we would only list it, uh, to four bedrooms, which would be the max of our home and, uh, a max of four cars. And my wife and I only really want one or two cars in there, to be honest. Um, so we have no problem with the recommendation and, and making sure that we align with what the neighbors, um, are requesting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Thompson?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I had, uh, two questions and I guess it's primarily for, uh, planning staff. Um, so I understand, uh, the limitation, the recommended, uh, condition of approval would be for four, uh, bedrooms within the household. Is there an occupancy limit, um, associated with that? For the, for the household as a whole?
Um, I would say no. Um, it would just be, I guess it would be sort of self-limiting by, you know, the number of sleeping you know, beds. There could be, I guess, a double or queen bed in each bedroom. Um, but I guess it's intended to not have a, not, sort of like an unlimited number of rooms that would lead lead to increased numbers of people and, and traffic with a, with that, uh, home for rent.
Thank you. And my, my second question is, um, in reviewing the public comments for, uh, this case, uh, they primarily centered on impacts to surrounding households, uh, primarily traffic and also, um, the presence of basically strangers. Um, so though this may not be related per se to some of the applicable criteria, um, I guess the question I have for you is if the, um, rental exceeds the recommended, uh, four vehicles, does that go towards, uh, is the consequences a code enforcement, uh, report? And what would be the consequences for, um, exceeding, exceeding that limitation?
Yes, that would be a code enforcement. And if the applicant were found to be in violation, they, uh, I guess the ramifications could be rescindment, uh, rescinding of the discretionary use permit. Um, that would be, I guess, the, the one consequence, potential consequence would be essentially a loss of opportunity to have a short-term rental, uh, that is not owner occupied.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Schmunk?
So, um, is this an unusual, um, a little bit unusual for Springfield at this point?
It is, this is the first application we've received. This is not the first, um, short-term rental that we're aware that's in the community. Uh, so this will be the first of probably more to come, um, short-term rentals that, that, that the commission will have to uh, consider as, I guess, on a case-by-case basis.
Clearly allowed within the code.
Yes, but subject to discretionary use and provide that they, um, address the criteria of approval. And staff believes that with conditions of approval for parking and limiting the number of units available for rent on the site, it addresses some of the concerns about crowds, noise and parking on the street.
So, um, in terms of rescinding the order and does, does, does the city have staff to go out and manage a complaint like a land use, there's the, the complaint to rescind the, um, permission?
We do. We have code enforcement staff. I, and I guess it depends on the nature of the complaint. Some complaints could be directed to police and then, you know, make their way down to, to planning if it's to do with noise or, you know, you know, something else that might, a police response, for example. Um, and that could include parking. If there's illegal parkings, people are double parked, people are parked across someone's Um and that could include parking. If there's illegal parkings, people are double parked, people are parked across someone's driveway, the first response could be police, um at which time then the city would be aware that there's something that associate with that property and that would it staff would have to look into from a code enforcement standpoint.
So a a police call would automatically um uh bring this up uh for for review?
Um it I I guess depending upon what the police call is, it could potentially bring it up for review, yes.
Okay, but it's possible that they could they could go there and it never gets to to city staff for for follow up on the
Correct, because yeah, anything could happens. People could drive away, you know, there's it it I guess it's like any any type of an enforcement response. If the crime is no longer in progress or, you know, the people leave the scene. Um then there's only so much you can do as far as enforcement of an illegally parked vehicle. For example, if it's gone and it's self corrected, I guess you'd say.
So so if I guess just I see what happens here. If if there are continued violations, then clearly um the city would and could take action to rescind it and require go back to a regular month uh month to month rental or, sorry, uh you know.
Absolutely, yeah. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I guess just further to your comments, Commissioner Schmunk, um one way that the city can get a handle on this is through permitting. Um and so knowing the locations and having the permits in place so that we can identify the properties without having to go through a Airbnb website to see, you know, well, which properties are being listed. It will take some time, but hopefully the city can get a better inventory and a knowledge about where they're located and if there's anything associated specifically with these rental properties, then to try to um take the appropriate actions.
So uh so it appears that you're saying there are uh that, you know, there's others out there that didn't do this permitting processes. Uh and so I mean, it's obviously a good thing.
Yeah, correct. And and so uh I guess fortunately or unfortunately for the applicant, they are the first um under the new newly adopted code. Um there are no doubt properties that predated changes the code. And properties that are subsequent to this would have to be in conformance of that, but it's it's not easy to prove exactly when some of these started. People might do them from time to time. Um you know, put their house up for rent just during the track events at football games and that sort of thing. So um all of this may take some time. One of the things, though, that I was aware of, I it staff had had a misunderstanding about is that all of the rentals contribute to transient room tax. So if they listed on any of the websites, at least they're contributing. And that was one thing that had been identified in the complaints was people are somehow flying under the radar. Well, they're not if they're listing with an accredited Airbnb or vacation rental by owner or other website, they are contributing to the tax base. So that's at least something that they're, everyone's on a level playing field from that perspective.
So if the property is sold, does this revert back to would the next owner or would this carry? Um could could this, could you sell the property with this in in place?
I believe it would run with the property.
I think that's a piggybacks then on my question, which is that there's no limitation on who can own and and request this kind of uh permit. Is that correct? It could be a corporate owner, it could be somebody living in Missouri, it could be somebody out of the country. There's no limitation within the current city code. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes. Similar to there is no limitation on who can rent their house month to month.
Right.
I just, you know, as we're kind of going through this, um I I guess the thought that stands out is not really a question, it's more of a comment. Um I just think of it from the applicants from Adrian's standpoint. And I just kind of feel a little bit of frustration um towards the city on on, you know, be him being in the situation, knowing that he's doing everything by the book while others are not. And others are not incurring the expense, others are not doing those things. So um obviously the city has a is aware of this issue and um is doing everything they can. And so it's not a criticism of the city, but it is 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 to state that if I were in the applicant's shoes, um I recognize that there's that there's that burden he's taking on that others aren't. And so I just wanted to say it on the public record that I I appreciate that about you guys and uh I hope in the future we're able to um help level the playing field because, again, this is an investment property. And he's doing this to support um his own level of living, as is everybody who's doing this. It's just he's taking a higher burden of expense to do it um by following our laws and as was as was noted in this, there's this there's an expensive application fee associated with this and a lot of time involved. So that's my my only comment is just acknowledging that that there's that piece. There's not a level playing field right now because and there's, as you mentioned, Andy, there's lots of challenges that go with it. But if we can work towards down the Rhine to level that playing field, um uh I I would I would appreciate that.
I can just offer one comment to uh you, Commissioner Buck. Um my understanding is that the city is considering invoking a business licensing program uh for these types of accommodations. That also would help to level the playing field and that licensure uh would ensure that, you know, people had to provide evidence of, you know, when exactly they started and if they hadn't started under current code regulations, they would have to meet that um or be in jeopardy of not being able to operate. So that that's another way, but it's the city does not have it in place yet. And so that's something that, again, hoping to level the playing field as someone as Mr. Sherrod will be uh uh I guess ahead of the game in that respect.
Now, and I appreciate that and I'm a and I'm very confident that you're hang out of an alignment with with my view on this is 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 where this is at and you guys are doing everything you can. So again, it wasn't a criticism of 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 you or or the city, just kind of a frustration of where we're at. But you have to start somewhere.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, uh would the applicant like to add anything? So last word here?
No, thank you.
Okay. Would the commission like to close the public hearing and the public record or to continue the hearing and hold the record open to another date?
I move to close the public record and the public hearing.
I second.
Great, uh can we uh have a roll call for that?
Sure. Um Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes Dyne?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Salazar?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
If we're ready to discuss the application, I will entertain a motion from the commission.
Can I ask a procedural question? Given the the last the the last item we saw, it doesn't seem like we we were ready for a motion since we're carrying it over. Should is it appropriate to give a motion now, Christina?
We're actually working on some language we could incorporate. Um so Christina has sent it to Andy and myself to review. Um and we'll actually post it up here and see if it captures what you would like. Um this one was a little bit more focused and we have the comments ahead, so we're a little more prepared than for the last one. So we'll share some language on the screen that we can incorporate. If it looks good, then you can move forward with it tonight.
Thanks. And just for clarity, I just wanted to mention that my understanding is that the reason we couldn't vote on the last motion is because public comment included speaking points to the criteria of approval. So that needs to be incorporated. If the any public comment speaks to the criteria of approval, it has to be incorporated into the record and the findings.
And these comments do as well, but it's on one issue. Um that's already pretty robustly addressed in the and Andy's staff report and the prior hearing, there were multiple issues. It's just too I I don't think Tom or I could draft those that set of findings for you during the meeting.
Come on, Christina. Appreciate.
Um so I can go ahead and share if you would like to see those now.
Please.
Okay. I have to get to my Zoom screen. So um Andy's report indicates that there are, there was no comment received, so we would replace that sentence with this sentence if everything looks okay. If there are issues that you heard um or read in the um testimony that you do not think are addressed, that we can add some language, we'd be happy to do that as well. So we're open to having you change this language. This is just a starting point for your consideration as you move forward with your deliberations.
We're gonna need to vote on this.
If if you feel that you are ready to do that, um yes, you would vote on it. Otherwise, you would give direction as to how else you would want us to um address the issues and the findings and we could come back.
Does anyone not feel ready to vote on this?
No concerns. Thanks, Andy.
I think we are ready to vote on this.
Are ready to vote, then you would just make the original motion with the um to approve the order in attachment three with the changes to the findings um presented on the screen.
I move to approve the applicant um uh the application as presented here with the addition of uh amendment three. Um as as posted here this evening.
I second.
Any discussion? Can we get a roll call?
Sure. Uh Commissioner Salazar?
Aye.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Uh Chair Rhodes Dyne?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, uh so now uh we'll hear business from the planning commission. Are there any reports of council actions?
I have a report that I owe, but I um not prepared to give it tonight. Uh I'll go it in a future meeting.
Anybody prepared to give a report?
I am prepared. Uh I watched uh the meeting on the works at the council work work session on April twenty second. And um there were no items directly related to planning commission business. There were some adjacent items. Um wastewater and stormwater um fees and um how that infrastructure is paid for. And um as well as approval of the annual plan for the um CEDAC um for CDBG, CDBG funds. Um there is a plan to move forward uh there and um council is excited about the the um uh the proposals and they've also asked for additional um for the CEDAC to to um inquire locally with um affordable housing developers to see if there are there's any need for those funds to be used for um maintenance of property, of affordable housing properties or um income restricted properties, as we've referred to them recently. Income qualified, excuse me. Um and then there was also a CEDAC or uh excuse me, a CEDA meeting. Um and in that meeting, they discussed uh STCs.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh Chair, my apologies. I had a report from May sixth, uh which I will be prepared to provide at the next meeting as well.
Great. Is there any other business from the planning commission? Hearing none. Is there any business from the Development and Public Works Department?
Well, you will now have a meeting on May twenty first. Um it should be short um for you to provide these various reports and then to um review the final order with the changes to the staff report from the variance. Um and we don't have anything else for you for that night, so hopefully it will be short and sweet, but if you're all here, maybe we could get a picture for us. We don't have a picture of the planning commission, so it'd be great if we could do that next week or next two weeks on the twenty first.
Great, that's it? Um well, with that, I will adjourn the planning commission regular meeting.